All right, good evening. I'd like to call the October 9th, 2025.
Hi, meeting the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Monica Daniels for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I would like to, in reference and recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, that we take a moment of silence to honor the survivors who continue to survive, to inspire us with their strength, the warriors who are still fighting, and the loved ones who have lost far too soon. May this moment remind us of the importance of early detection, support, and hope, and of our shared responsibility to stand together in the fight against breast cancer. Please join me in a moment of silence.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson has let us know he will not be joining us this evening. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager, any recommended changes?
I have no change, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Nothing from Mr. Attorney down there?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we'll move on to special recognitions.
I would like to ask the members of the J. H. Rose Thespian Society to step forward. So. Come on up here. So, we would like to recognize the J. H. Rose Thespian Society for some recent accomplishments that they have had, outstanding awards, as we will hear about here tonight. Let me tell you a little bit about the Thespian Society. The International Thespian Society, a program of the Educational Theater Association, honors student achievement in the theater arts. In June, the J. H. Rose High School's International Thespian Society, Troop 894, took its third trip to the International Thespian Festival, a premier gathering of high school students, of high school theater students from across the country. The festival celebrates excellence in theater through workshops, college auditions, professional development, and adjudicated performances. This year, Troop 894 took seventeen students to compete in seven events, including costume design, solo and duet dance, and group and duet musical theater. The troupe earned superior ratings, the highest rating possible, in four events, while two of their performances received the coveted Thespian Award for earning top scores in their categories. Additionally, their group musical number, Mama Mia, was awarded Critics' Choice, earning the exceptional honor of performing on the festival's main stage during the closing ceremonies. The trip marked an unforgettable achievement for these students and underscored their dedication to the art and theater. So, we'd like to recognize each one of our students here tonight. The students who participated in this year's event include Kamaria Price Bradley, Raylan Phillips, Eden Bassnight, Lucy Myers, Janaye Warren, Haley Owens, Anna Phillips, Sarah Grace Colley, Gracie Shrimp, Ireland Scully, Dexter Thalen, Aiden Woods, Cyrus Freeman, Casey North, Abby Kostarfen, Aria Pike, and Zach Coley. And we also have our instructional staff, Ms. G., Ms. J., Ms. G., all right. Can I leave it at that? Okay. All right. Ms. Borasov, and Ms. Kraus. Oh, Ms. Kraus. Look, I tell you what, as having, as being a parent of a child that was very involved in the arts, I know firsthand at how important it is to molding, not only your character, but ensuring that you are also an outstanding student, and it has really, it will really prepare you for the future ahead of you in your life. So, I congratulate all of you on all the effort. I know it's a hot lot of hard work, but it's very rewarding when you're able to do as well as y'all did. So, congratulations.
And I'm Ireland's dad, if you didn't figure that out, and I'm just so proud of these young adults. I try not to get choked up, and I do that often when I'm with my daughters, but just so proud of them, and this is sort of the equivalent of them winning a national championship. And I just thought that was so cool. I wanted to celebrate them, because we really celebrate our sports in Greenville, we do an awesome job about that, but we also have an incredible arts community, especially in our schools, and can't say enough to these wonderful teachers for spending their time, a lot of volunteer time involved in this, to make wonderful experiences that, like Michael said, are really life-changing and are going to shape these people into leaders that are going to go forth. Not all of them will participate in theater going forward, I hope they all do, but they will all carry those skills of confidence and being onstage, learn how to talk to anybody, work as a team, show up for one another, show up on time. These are invaluable skills in whatever you do in life. So, thank you so much, we're so proud of you guys, and way to go.
All right, now we've got another special guest. Noelia Velazquez is here. It's been a little bit of time before, since we've been able to recognize her, because she's at High Point University right now, but back on, was it August 5th?
Yes.
August 5th.
Maybe. Does it say August 5th?
Maybe.
I'm not sure around the beginning of August. It's been a while.
So, but it's been a while, so we've been, had the opportunity for her to be here today, and we wanted to honor her because she won an amazing pageant. I've been able to know Noelia for quite some time, because she's won many pageants, and we've been able to meet several times, and she's doing great work throughout our community, but now she's in High Point, and we know, I know her mom wants her to come back here when she gets done, so she can continue her good work here as well, too. But we wanted to recognize her for the special accomplishment, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the email that you sent to me was that, did Halle Berry win this as well?
Yeah.
That's pretty impressive right there. So, maybe she won't, maybe she'll be out in LA, making us all proud out there. So, I'm going to read the proclamation for everyone. Whereas Noelia Velazquez, a proud resident of Greenville, North Carolina, has achieved national recognition as the reigning Miss Teen All-American, representing grace, intelligence, and service as an ambassador for young women across the country. Whereas Noelia began her journey in pageantry at the age of nine, competing in the National American Miss System, where she earned the titles of Miss North Carolina Pre-Teen 2018 and Miss North Carolina Junior Teen 2021, before capturing the national title of National American Miss Teen Junior Teen, traveling nationally, internationally, to inspire young girls throughout her, through her platform, Girl Strong by Noe. Noe, right?
Noe.
Noe, okay. Whereas, her win in the inaugural Miss Teen All-American Pageant held August 2nd, I'm sorry, 2025, as the North Charleston Performing Arts Center brought this distinguished national title home to Greenville, North Carolina, and whereas beyond her pageantry accomplishments, Noelia is a sophomore at High Point University, pursuing a bachelor's degree in broadcast journalism, where she served as a campus ambassador, director of philanthropy at Alpha Gamma Delta, 2024 cohort representative for the Lift Fellowship Program, and an anchor for HPU Vision, the university's student-led news program. And whereas Noelia exemplifies servant leadership through her commitment to mental health advocacy, female empowerment, and storytelling, and has expanded her outreach through her digital interview series, Girls, Girl Talk by Noe.
Yes.
Connecting with women from diverse backgrounds who are making positive changes. And whereas, she continues to use her national platform to partner with organizations such as Smile Train, to raise awareness and support for children with cleft conditions, and to represent the Miss Teen All-American organization through appearances and service opportunities across the nation and abroad. Now therefore, I, PJ Connolly, Mayor of the City of Greenville, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim, or excuse me, recognize and congratulate Noelia Velazquez for her outstanding achievements, leadership, and dedication to uplifting others, and express the city's pride in her accomplishments as she continues to serve as a role model for young people everywhere. In witness whereof, I hereby undo, set my hand, and cause the official seal of the City of Greenville to affix this ninth day of October, 2025.
So, as PJ Connolly mentioned, I won my first title in 2018, and I actually had the pleasure of meeting him then, and since then, every title I've earned, I've actually come to this exact building and had a meeting with him, every time getting to explain, you know, my passion of helping girls, and the different travels I make throughout my reigns. This one is a very special one, because it was my last time competing as a teenager before I age up into the old Miss Age Division, but I knew that when I was going back, even though I was studying at High Point University, that I wanted to represent Greenville at least one last time before, you know, I may not do pageants again, or I just finished my education, who knows later on, but wearing Greenville on my chest just felt so right, and stepping on that stage, representing something that, I was born and raised here. So, I had the utmost honor, and then winning the title and bringing it home to Greenville meant everything. I'm very special and honored to be here today to kind of commend that moment, and so I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
All right, Ms. Danielle, come on down. So, tonight, it is my honor to recognize Danielle Petro has earned her Certified Municipal Clerk's Designation through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. It is a professional achievement that is earned through a mix of experience, training, and education, and it signifies an extensive understanding of the nuances of the role of the city clerk. The clerk is one of the oldest roles in public service, with origins dating back to biblical times. My goodness. You need to pray over me tomorrow, okay? Today, the responsibilities of the municipal clerk vary from city to city, but they are generally known as the record keepers of their organization. In the City of Greenville, the clerk's office also plays an active role in connecting the community with the city council, and is a reliable source for the public. Danielle's attention to detail, and that is true, strong work ethic, which that is true, and desire to serve makes her an important part of the city clerk's team, and an asset to the City of Greenville. We are so happy to recognize for this great accomplishment. Congratulations.
Public speaking is really not my jam, but I will do this for Danielle, for my team. I can't say enough good things about Danielle, she really is devoted to her job, public service, and what I can say is that, just like everything that she does, all the multiple roles, a mother, a wife, a daughter, being deputy city clerk, she approaches that with the expectation to carry it out with excellence. So, she is an asset to the City of Greenville, and girl, I thank you.
If you're in a, if you're in a, if you're in a meeting, and there's a lot of things being talked about, and you need somebody to break it down, she is the person that will break it down and make it all understandable.
I'll try.
All right. We will move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public, items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing, conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week, shall not be discussed. A total of thirty minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted thirty minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted thirty minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. Jerry McRoy. Mr. McRoy, if you want to approach the public podium, you have thirty minutes to address the mayor and council.
I'm glad you guys explained what a Thespian was.
I didn't know either.
I did.
My name is Jerry McRoy, I live at 1017 Van Gert Drive, actually Wernerville, but I'm a Greenville resident. Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
It is a fact that your actions will not always please everyone. I have been here before to speak to you about the Camping World flag issue, and now that issue is settled, I still believe it is appropriate to applaud councilmembers Daniels and Robinson, who's not here, for the, who made the right decision on that issue, and hold councilmembers Scully, Willis, Foreman, and Blackburn accountable for a terrible and costly decision. In the last two weeks, my wife and I have traveled to western North Carolina and eastern Tennessee. We saw the big, beautiful American flags flying over Camping World locations, where the firm also had to fight overzealous municipalities. But yet, those big, beautiful American flags are still flying over Statesville, North Carolina, and Seaberville, Tennessee. I'm not sure why four of you thought you could fight the same battle and win. How that power trip worked out for you? Sadly, the North Carolina Legislature had to step in to show you the error of your ways. But on the good side, Greenville, North Carolina will no longer be a city that others across our nation hold in disdain. Many thought our fair city is un-American. Many could not believe our city council was fighting a big, beautiful American flag. The actions of four of you have resounded across platforms like Facebook and LinkedIn to the detriment of Greenville. Your job is to make good decisions to benefit our citizens and esteem our city. Hopefully, if you continue in your current positions, you will strive to make better decisions going forward. And one other thing, I've not had time to fully investigate a couple of matters I just learned about this week. It is my understanding that this council voted to spend $150,000 on a DEI study. It is also my understanding that this council voted to commit $450,000 to an equity study. I hope these things are not true, but if they are, can you imagine how far $600,000 would go toward filling potholes, repairing curbs, and replacing missing or damaged street signs? As it has often been said, elections have consequences. I hope our city voters will remember that as they go to the polls this election cycle. Good evening, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McRoy.
Thank you, Mr. McRoy.
Thank you, Mr. McRoy.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Okay. Next speaker is Mr. Mike Tan. Mr. Tan, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was at the Monday city council workshop when the Unified Developmental Ordinance was discussed, and I had some questions, so I went to the city website, tried to find the verbiage that was actually in the UDO. It's not there. It's got some slick website stuff, but the actual language is not on the website, or if it is, after hours, I couldn't find it. During Monday's presentation, we informed that the number of required retail parking spots would be cut by fifty percent. City ordinance 9-4-252 requires one space for 200 feet. They've raised that number to one for 300 feet, a fifty percent raise. I don't know about y'all, but we got a parking problem here in Greenville, whether it's downtown, whether it's down there in front of Nino's, wherever it is, we have parking issues. Now, I know there's an argument to be said about, maybe they could use that for green spaces for runoff, but without able to seeing, without being able to see the actual UDO, we don't know if that's going to be an alternative use or not. So, I really think that we need to look at that and put it out there that we need to have adequate parking here in town. The other issue was, it, they talked about allowing developers not to put playgrounds in their neighborhoods that they develop. While the Horizon Plan 2026 talks about walkability and access to civic spaces, which includes neighborhood parks, that's been our position here for about a decade now. Why is it changing? I've got a problem with that. We've got great parks, we've got the Town Commons, we've got Alice Keane, we've got South Greenville Rec Center, but we don't have enough neighborhood parks. When I was a young parent, I would love pushing that store four, five blocks to my neighborhood park, or watching my kids run their bike to go to the neighborhood park. By not having developers develop property, develop parks on their property, we are not doing right by the citizens here in Greenville, North Carolina. So, now, all these concerns could have been remedied if the actual language to the UDO as it's written, as proposed right now, was actually on the website. It may be in there, but nobody in this room on this side knows what's in there or not, because it's not there. So, I'm asking for greater transparency, I'm asking that if it's not, if these concerns are real, that the council addressed them before they pass them on, because we need more parking, and we need more parks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tan.
Thank you, and Mr. Tan, I just want to let you know that I have discussed both of those issues behind the scenes.
Thank you, council.
All right, Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes. Next speaker is Montrose Streeter. Mr. Streeter, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening. I rise just simply to say thank you to this council. I am a native of Greenville, I grew up and was born and raised in West Greenville. I've been away for about almost thirty years, I was just adding it up, and I've been involved in local government in Tennessee and in New York State. And to come back to Greenville, North Carolina, to see the fine work that you all have been doing as a council, it's true, you're not going to please everybody, and I have not always been satisfied with some of the decisions that you all have made, but I thank you for what you do, and that you do work hard for the citizens of Greenville. And so, I just want to say thank you, I wish you well. I am a proud alumnus of Rose High School, I was in dramatics when I was back there, and I think maybe that helped me to be where I am today, and I wish you all well in your reelection bid, and I pray for you that you all will always put our, the citizens first in the decisions that you make, knowing that sometimes a thank you goes a long way. So, thank you to each and every one of you for the work that you did. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Streeter.
It's not often.
I, I think you got about the fourth standing out.
It doesn't happen very often, so thank you very much.
All right. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes. Next speaker, Mr. Wade Wilson. Mr. Wilson, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, everyone, and before I read what I plan to say, I went over and confronted the gentleman who spoke first, not because I disagree with his right to express his opinion, particularly on the Camping World flag, but because we are less than a month away from an election, and he basically made a campaign speech, and it just so happened that when I went over and confronted him, I saw on his binder a sticker that said NCGOP. So, I do wonder if that speech he made, which I found the timing and name dropping to be completely uncalled for, especially this close to an election, I do wonder if there was a political motive behind it, and that's all I have to say about that. I know I don't have a ton of time, and I do have to run after I say this, so I'll go quickly. I'm Wade Wilson, I live at 199 Gabriel Drive, I'm here on behalf of myself, not anyone else, or no other organization. I was here on Monday, and wanted to continue my thoughts on the final topic I brought up. We're a great country, there's a number of reasons for our greatness, I think most people would mention freedom when talking about why America's great, I certainly would, but there are limits to freedom, and frankly, there should be. I'm not just talking about legal limits, I'm talking about social and moral limits. So, here's some examples. If I came up to this mic, and I have the freedom to do so, but if I started cussing or yelling very loud, or if I refused to leave after my time is up, the police would escort me out, because it infringes on the well-being of others. I have the freedom to drive my car around town, but if I drive over the speed limit, or I drink alcohol and then get behind the wheel, the police would pull me over and write me a citation, because that infringes on the well-being of others. I have the freedom to be myself and make my own decisions about my body, but if I wore obscene clothing in public, or if I wore no clothing at all and ran around naked, the police would arrest me, and they should, because even though what I wear is a personal decision, public obscenity and nudity infringes on the well-being of others. And I use these examples because there's too many people in our country, including a lot of prominent people in our city, who are anti-vaxers. Vaccines, of course, are a personal choice, yes, but the reason they are recommended by doctors, and in a lot of cases required by law, is because they protect the health, safety, and well-being of other people in addition to just ourselves. Being anti-vaccine really isn't that much different than being pro-drunk driving or pro-public nudity. Vaccines don't cause autism, vaccines cause adults. Of course, there are fringe cases, that's why we have doctors, researchers, and hospital ethics boards. To repeat what I said at the end of Monday's meeting, any person who claims
And that's time.
vaccines are dangerous because they did their own research, should go before the ECU Health Center and try to defend that take in front of a bunch of M.D.s and Ph.D.s.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All right, Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
We don't have any additional speakers.
Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record, you have three minutes. All right, seen no, closed public comment period, we will move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Yes, sir. First, we have the Historic Preservation Commission, Councilmember Blackburn.
I need to continue that one, I have someone I've been talking to, but just need to confirm.
And very sorry to report again, for housing authorities still waiting to hear from them about the resident commissioner.
I want to make it clear on that, because it is coming up every council meeting, that we are waiting on the housing authority to do their job, to make sure that the resident commissioner is being appointed, and I am awaiting that as much as the rest of the community.
Yep, absolutely. Planning and Zoning Commission, that is for Councilmember Robinson, who is not here. Police Community Relations Committee, and again, these are direct appointments. Councilmember Scully.
Ms. Stacy Ruffin.
Okay.
Congratulations, Ms. Ruffin.
Oh, congratulations. Let's see. There was one for Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Willis.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have someone that we're speaking with about that, so I'd like to continue it at least once.
All right. Sounds good. Next, we have the Recreation and Parks Commission, Mayor Connolly.
I am so proud of myself. After many meetings, I finally got somebody. I want to ask if somebody from the council will nominate Tiffany Godwin.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
motion opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Godwin. It's been like five meetings, so.
Pat that man on the back.
Okay. And the Sheppan Memorial Library Board, Councilmember Scully.
Thank you very much. I'd like to nominate Ms. Natia Brooks first.
You could probably do it all in one go if you wanted to.
And also Ms. Abigail Leach. Thank you very much, Ms. Wigger.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
motion opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Brooks and Ms. Leach.
Leach. And Mayor Connolly, that concludes the appointments.
How about that? All right. That brings us on to new business, which are the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or a representative, petitioner, and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing into the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Mr. Manager, our first public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I am number five. Orders requested by Douglas Gomes to rezone 422 acres located at the southwestern corner of the intersection of L T Hardy Road and East 10th Street, N C Highway 33, from RA 20 Residential Agriculture to C G General Commercial. Now call forward our planner, Chris Kelly, for the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
This property is located in the eastern part of the city. More specifically, this property is located at the southwestern corner of L T Hardy Road and East 10th Street. And as an added reference, I've indicated where the Walmart is on East 10th. This is an image of the property taken on East 10th Street. To your left will be L T Hardy Road. This is an image of the property on L T Hardy Road. To your right will be East 10th Street. The requested zoning could increase, the requested zoning could generate a net increase of 126 trips per day on East 10th Street. Based on the traffic volume report, the current zoning could generate nine trips per day. The proposed zoning could generate 135 trips per day, which is a net increase of 126. The increase of 126 would represent an increase of less than 1% over average daily trips, with the current capacity of East 10th Street being 78%. During the development review process, measures to mitigate traffic will be determined. This is a survey of the property totaling just under half an acre. The property drains through the Hardy Creek watershed. If stormwater rules apply, it would require 10-year detention and nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. The property is not located in the special flood hazard area, and there are no streams, buffers on the property. The property is currently zoned RA 20. Under the current zoning, the property currently accommodates one single family residence. Under the proposed zoning of C G, the property could accommodate 2,500 square feet of retail space. The future land use and care to map recommends commercial at the southwestern corner of the intersection of East 10th Street and L T Hardy Road, transitioning to traditional neighborhood medium to high density and residential low to medium density to the south. In staff's opinion, the requested zoning is in compliance with the future land use and care to map. Therefore, staff recommends approval. And on September 16th, Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Willis.
Chris, you mentioned about steps to mitigate traffic patterns. Can you give an example of what that could look like?
So I don't know if it would be for this property, but you could see turning lanes that would need to be added in, things like that.
But you don't know if it would be for this property?
Probably not for this property. It generates, I can't speak to that. That would come later on during the site plan process, when they want to change the use to residential to a commercial. So during that site plan process, traffic will be analyzed and any improvements.
Okay. I think I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Blackburn.
So I don't want to put you on the spot, so should I? If I do, maybe you can help. This is one of those open-ended questions. We've had a tremendous amount of development in that area just in the last year, year and a half. And I am very concerned about the residents of Lake Glenwood. I'm very concerned about, in general, 10th Street East. I talk about 10th Street East as much as possible, and it's very concerning. And if you could just put that map showing all the commercial, all the red. This was not, 10th Street East is not a commercial corridor. 10th Street East is a thoroughfare, and it has become a commercial corridor. It has become a Greenville Boulevard. And we, as Councilmember Willis pointed out, we need modifications. We need safety modifications. Can you, can you just kind of, in a non-specific way, talk about the residential development that has also taken place in that area? And I'm thinking about the townhomes, and there's been several developments with several additional residences. Any idea how many additional people are living there now that didn't used to live there?
Off the top of my head, I could not.
But it's hundreds, I would think. I don't know the numbers either. I've just kind of watched them as they come to us. I guess my point is, there are hundreds of new residences in that area. And 10th Street East is not equipped for the commercial nor the residences. This area has had, the good news is, this area has had explosive growth. My question, I will get to the question, is, do we have, and this kind of echoes Councilmember Willis's, do you know if there's plans to put a stoplight there?
I'll let Rick DeCesar, yeah.
And once Mr. DeCesar gets up, I may have some traffic questions, too.
Not currently. There's no plans currently to put a traffic signal. But the state is currently looking at L T Hardy Road, the whole of it, as it approaches 10th Street. And they're also looking at L T Hardy at 10th Street as far as possible mitigation in the future.
That is fantastic news.
Nothing's proposed, nothing's planned, but you know, as part of this development of this site, it's a very small site. It's hard to imagine that a site-specific commercial development could be placed there and have access. There'd be problems, obviously, to 10th Street. The state would probably suggest that the only access, if that site was developed by itself, would go out to L T Hardy Road and then connect.
And that was going to be my, and I want to come back to this modifications question, but that was my second question. How are we going to keep traffic off L T Hardy Road? That road has the sharp curve. It's a very small road. The people who are living there, Lake Glenwood, very concerned about what this huge commercial conglomerate, and once you add this lot to it, it opens up all kinds of possibilities to what that could be. How do we keep the traffic off L T Hardy?
That's why the, that's why the state's looking at it right now. I can't answer that question.
Well, that's good news.
They're looking, that's exactly what they're looking at. The operations along L T Hardy that have come up in the past with the developments along there, and any future development. I mean, there's a whole parcel to the west, I guess, that's all commercial and virtually vacant. I mean, that can develop. But with Riverstone being right across from this parcel, I can't imagine they would ever approve an access point to this parcel alone because you'd have to line it across the street with Riverstone, and it's too close to L T Hardy.
Do you know if there's an existing, because it's a home right now. There's got to be a driveway there. Does the driveway lead out to L T Hardy or 10th Street?
Say the question again.
Does the driveway on the residential property lead to L T Hardy or to 10th Street? Chris, Mr. Kelly's nodding his head.
It's L T Hardy.
L T Hardy.
Yeah.
And so would the commercial, if the commercial took place there, it might initially? I want to keep the commercial traffic off L T Hardy is the bottom line here. I think, I think we owe that to the folks living there that did not anticipate this happening in their backyard.
Understand the comment, but they're both state roads. And we've kind of had this discussion before, corner parcels, and what the state would want the traffic go into the secondary intersection because that connection to 10th Street is already there. And it would be a small amount that you'd be adding to L T Hardy Road. But all that discussion is based on a site plan that comes in. We have no idea what's proposed for this parcel alone, or if it's going to be combined into that whole area to the west at some future point.
Can we take steps to minimize the traffic on L T Hardy Road? When we look at those site plans, can we have requirements that everything? Because I know that this came up with the Tropical Smoothie, that commercial rezoning, where in theory, traffic is supposed to go out at the lowest stoplight. Is there any way to have that be a requirement for traffic? Especially when we're looking at this enormous conglomeration of commercial development, potential commercial development?
If this, if this parcel was developed just by itself, what I would suspect is the state would want to position their driveway as far south on the parcel to get it away from 10th Street, get some separation from 10th Street. Okay? And then they might ask, they might ask for a right turn lane into the site coming from 10th Street. But it really depends on the, on the plan that's proposed.
Well, and that, and I guess we don't, do we know, is this lot going to be lumped in with the rest of the commercial development? Do we know? And that, of course, can affect our decision. We have to make our decision based on the merits of this request.
We have to assume, we have to assume that the parcel, based on size, can support X amount of square feet of the proposed zoning, which was provided to us by planning, and we just look at that and forget everything else.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. My last question, which is a traffic question, and I know you deal in numbers, Mr. DeCesar, and I know that you say that it will only increase by 1%, and that 10th Street East is only at 78%. I live out there. Everybody hears this from me all the time, and we can't do a thing about it because it's a state road. But it is absolute madness out there. It is fast, it is overburdened, and it is unmodified. And it is absolutely, it's becoming more and more and more impossible to drive out there. And that's just a continual concern for me and for everyone else who lives out there. Of course, I'm getting into comments now, so I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
And you know, when we projected this, we figured 50% would go east and 50% would go west, you know, arriving and departing. So that's 60, that's 60 trips per day either way. That's 30 arriving, 30 going the other way, 30 arriving, 30 going the other way. So I mean, it's a small amount. You've heard me say this before. It should be in sequential, but with access to 10th Street, it's, you can add 10, and it could virtually be a problem. So that's why I'm suggesting that the state would probably say we want access to L T Hardy in the safest position possible in the grand scheme of everything that's going around there. I just can't see them saying, yes, let's put a driveway across from Riverstone, because then there's that invitation to just go back and forth from that neighborhood to the parcel, and that would be the last thing we would want.
Clearly, there's more stoplights needed there. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know we need more stoplights. And I know that this is something that we continue to petition for. One last question for you. I know we don't have a crystal ball, but if this entire conglomerate gets developed as commercial, are they still going to want to use L T Hardy? And will they still be allowed to use L T Hardy?
If that whole area got developed, again, depending on the site plan that was submitted.
So we can't know that. Because it's one thing to have, you know, one half-acre commercial business with, you know, 30, 60 trips using L T Hardy. It's another thing to have a shopping mall using your street.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I would think, I would think that, you know, there's an obvious place for connection to 10th Street, which places it halfway between L T Hardy and the Walmart driveway.
But either way, we're looking, we're just speculating. We don't know.
Yeah, but we, again, that's, if that whole parcel, if all that was developed back to the railroad, you know, I would suspect that would be one point of, would be one point of access. Whether or not they would ask for another one, yeah, speculation.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Other questions for staff? All right. Seeing none, public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
I wanted to clarify some of your questions. So the property next to the lot that we're talking about is actually owned by the same.
Can you, can you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, I have a very soft.
You're okay. You're all right.
So the property next to that one is actually owned by the same.
What's your name?
Can you state your name for the record?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Karen Staden.
Okay. Thank you.
The plans are to combine the two lots to create a commercial property for a builder's studio. And the parking lot is actually planned for the other lot. So it won't be coming off L T Hardy. So you don't have to worry about that.
If I may, we have to make our, this is the policy wonk side of things. We have to make our decision based on all possible uses. I appreciate your sharing that. So you say, if I may, Mayor, you say it's going to be a builder's studio. You're going to combine the two lots.
Correct. And when I say builder's studio, more of a design studio, not building stuff there.
And so both of those lots are, have the same owner?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate your sharing that, and I guess you're the petitioner?
Well, I'm here in lieu of him. He's not here right now. But there is one driveway, but it's on the very end of the property, and that property backs up to a body shop.
Now, is this the house that recently was destroyed by fire? Is that?
No. That one's actually closer to Walmart.
Okay.
This house is as old as that one. In fact, they couldn't find the septic permit anywhere, but we know they has one. So it's a pretty old house, and I can't see a single family ever wanting to live that close to the main highway.
Thank you very much for speaking on that.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or motion.
I have something to say. I notice sometimes the cringes and things whenever questions are being asked by someone on council as it relates to rezonings, property, traffic patterns, and things of that sort. I just want to make clear that when we say the state is looking at a particular roadway, L T Hardy in this instance, for a traffic light or doing anything to make improvements, one of the reasons we have hesitation is because we've been waiting for the state to do a lot to our roadways where we're having challenges in our community. And what we've done for a significant period of time is put the cart before the horse as it relates to doing what we need to do to keep our citizens safe as we grow. We're going through a significant growth spurt in our community as it relates to the city of Greenville, in our county, and in our state. And it is difficult, when you're making decisions, to try to manage that growth responsibly. And it is difficult when you're making decisions to try to manage that growth responsibly. Which is why I always talk about responsible economic growth as well as order of operations. Also, I really appreciate the citizen giving us the information about what you're planning to do with it at this moment. I'll reiterate that that doesn't change what could happen in the future. Because once it's zoned a certain way, then anybody that owns that property can do whatever they like with it based on state law. And the problem is that we don't know. So I reiterate, part of the question is that we, the reason we have questions is that we often get information in pieces. And with that getting information in pieces and trying to project what could happen. Our responsibility is to represent citizens. And to represent the safety and the harmony that needs to exist as we grow between growth and the safety of the citizens and preservation of our community. So I just wanted to reiterate that because, you know, that is pretty difficult. That's, that's a challenging thing to do. Particularly when, and I was going to save this for the end of the evening. We're experiencing more deaths due to, due to traffic in our community. And so when we're thinking about things like this, that we're having our mind that we don't want something to happen. We don't want to have made a decision that a parent might get a phone call that is their child that has had an accident and lost their life because of decisions that we've made as it relates to growth and not considering traffic and infrastructure. So with that, that's all I have to say.
All right, any other discussion, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll say I, I wholeheartedly approve or agree with both of you. However, this is a very small lot, the corner of a, of a commercial zone that, and with our future character land use map, it lines up with that, and it's a sliver. Although we, we are going to keep asking the questions and making sure that we're doing our due diligence, that's our job. So anybody who's come before us just needs to know that that's the question we're going to ask first, how this going to affect people? And with that, I will, if there's no other discussion.
No, thank you.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made. Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Willis. I do want to say though, you know, and, and I understand your thought process on it too. And I don't know where the, I don't know where the line is. But, you know, I've been on the council and as a mayor for now a decade. And, you know, the, one of the frustrating parts to me is that, you know, I'll use a great example. We had the MPO meeting, was it two weeks ago, I think, Michael? And when I first got on the council as a council member, not that as a mayor, we talked about the traffic signalization plan. And here we are, 10 years later, it still hasn't started. And when I had that conversation, they said, I think, was it 2029? They, they anticipated that it was going to be fully implemented. And so there's a fine line, right? You know, like, we do have to be very careful. But we also, I think, in the same breath, have to keep those people that are at the state level accountable for the actions. Because we can't hold, stop all of our growth, right? Because if we want opportunities for the citizens in Greenville bringing new jobs, new different opportunities, we also have to be proactive with it too. So I do agree, I mean, I think that we do have to be smart about the growth. But we also have to be mindful that we can't just sit and stop everything, right? You know, and I don't think you're proposing to do that by any means.
No, that's not.
At all. I just, I just say that at some point, we've got to do something with the state. Because it's not just Greenville, it's throughout the entire state of North Carolina is having this problem. And I don't know who we need to talk to. But somebody at the NC DOT needs to start moving a little bit faster than they are.
Yeah, and I think.
That was my point.
Think we, we have talked about that and the fact that, you know, I think the greatest risk to this city is infrastructure. I consistently said that. Because all of our major thoroughfares are NC DOT thoroughfares. And if we're going to hold a, a standard that, that, like for this rezoning, this particular rezoning. If, if, if that's the standard and say if it gets voted down, well, then basically, what, that's what we're saying, is that we don't want any more growth. Because all of, or we can't handle any more growth. Because every single one of those thoroughfares are either at the same type of capacity or over the same type of capacity. So if that is the standard, then basically it is saying like, we, there can't be any more growth. Because the, the roads, all of them, I don't have to rattle them off, y'all know which, what they are. But there's about seven of them. That I would say 90% of the traffic in the city is on those seven thoroughfares. Many of them already well over capacity. So yes, we, we have attempted to be more vocal, but I think that's got to be the major priority of the council moving forward is DOT thoroughfare infrastructure.
And I want to be clear, because we are in agreement on that, that I'm not saying that there can't be any more. But whenever something comes before us, that we do need to look at that, and we need to look at it strategically. And we need to put, as Matt said, people first and, and lead with love, understanding that we are looking out for the safety of our citizens. And the harmony that needs to exist between that growth and responsibility. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, any other discussion? All right, it's been properly motioned and seconded. So Councilmember Scully, Councilmember Willis, right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Let's move on to item number six.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number six, ordinance requested by North State Steel Incorporated to rezone a total of .5532 acres from RA 20 residential agriculture to IU unoffensive industry for track one, .4689 acres. And track two, .0843 acres for the property located along the southern right of way of West Gum Road at 1,225 plus or minus feet east of Old River Road. Again, call forward our city planner, Chris Kelly, for the presentation.
Got a little bit of a break there.
This property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. This rezoning request includes two different tracks. Both tracks are located along the southern right of way of West Gum Road, east of Old River Road. Just to give you a little reference of where you are. To the east, you have Pitt Greenville Airport, and what you see on that map is the northern runway. This is an image of the property of track one, to your right would be Old River Road. This is an image of track two, to your right would be Old River Road. Staff does not anticipate any change in intensity between the current and proposed zoning. Therefore, traffic volume report was not generated. This is a survey of the two tracks totaling just over half an acre, with track one being the majority. The property drains to Parker's Creek watershed. If stormwater rules apply, it would require 10-year detention and nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. A portion of the property is located in the special flood hazard area. And there are no jurisdictional wetlands, streams, and buffers on the property. Tracks one and two are currently zoned RA 20. Under the current zoning, track one could accommodate one single-family residence. Track two is not available due to the size of it. Under the proposed zoning of IU or unoffensive industry, the two tracks will most likely be incorporated into the existing laydown yard. And just for council to know, all of the IU zoned properties surrounding it and where these tracks are kind of sandwiched in, is owned by North State Steel. The future land use and character map recommends commercial at the intersection of Belle Vore Highway and Old River Road, transitioning to industrial logistics in the interior. In staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the future land use and character map. Therefore, staff recommends approval. And on September 16th, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously, unanimously to recommend approval of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly?
I have one. Do we know what businesses surround that currently?
Uh, no, ma'am. I forgot the name of the mart, but this is a, some kind of service, commercial service right here. My apologies.
Oh, no, you're fine, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seen none, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Conley. My name is Steve Sproul here representing the applicant tonight. Just wanted to let you know that we have thought about this. The North State Steel owns many of the surrounding properties. I suspect some of them will get recombined into one lot in some form or fashion when they start doing their development and site plan work on this. Wanted to point out that the plans under commission approved this unanimously. And it's in compliance with the land use plan, and staff has recommended approval of that. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them tonight.
All right, any questions for Mr. Sproul? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seen none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion or motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, second by Councilmember Scully. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Right, motion passes five zero.
Let's move on to item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven, ordinance requested by Robert Forbes Jr. and James Forbes to amend the future land use and character map for .937 acres from traditional neighborhood medium to high density TNMH to mixed use MU for the property located along the northern right of way of NC 43 North and 500 plus or minus feet east of McGregor Downs Road. Again, call forward our city planner, Chris Kelly, for the presentation.
So again, this, this is a request to amend the future land use plan. Staff relies on this plan to determine if a rezoning is appropriate. So this is a request in anticipation of a rezoning request that'll come at a later point. This property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. More specifically, the property is located along the northern right of way of NC 43 North and 500 feet east of McGregor Downs Road. This is an image of the property taken on NC 43 North. To your left would be McGregor Downs Road. And I know it's a little hard to see, but the wall signage on the building says Audio Arts, and it was a recording studio. And for a better view of the property, I've included a, a Google Street View for you. The requested land use could generate a net increase of 54 trips per day on NC 43 North. Based on the traffic volume report generated for this request, the current land use could generate 54 trips per day. The proposed land use could generate 108 trips per day, which is a net increase of 54 trips. An increase of 54 trips per day would represent less than 1% for the average daily trips with the current capacity of NC 43 North being 55%. During the development review process, measures to mitigate traffic will be determined. This property is currently zoned RA 20. Future land use and character map recommends mixed use at the intersection of NC 43 North and McGregor Downs Road, transitioning to traditional neighborhood medium to high density to the north and west. Under the current land use character of TNMH, the site could accommodate eight multifamily units. This request is to amend the current land use character to MU or mixed use. Under the proposed land use category of MU, the site could accommodate 2,000 square feet of retail space. When the Horizons Plan was last updated in 2016, we had a comprehensive plan committee. The committee developed these eight guiding principles when looking at the future land use plan and where land uses should go. In staff's opinion, the request is in, the request of mixed use is in keeping with number eight, which is sustainable development practices. And staff recommends approval of this request. And on September 16th, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Councilmember Blackburn.
Mr. Kelly, can you state again what the current land use plan designation calls for?
TNMH, that would be your more, more dense residential.
So to me, when I see this request, it looks a lot like what happened on 10th Street East, where you get a commercial creep, just one lot at a time. And you said that it was, that it represented sustainable practices, reason number eight. Can you talk a little bit about why this would be a favorable change?
I kind of heard two questions in there, it kind of started with East 10th Street. But just to answer this mixed use question, so in number eight, sustainable development practices, we have an unused building as of yet, it was a recording studio, it's been sitting vacant for quite some time. It's kind of, it's sustainable to allow it to now be rezoning or at a later point, come rezoned, be redeveloped, come up to compliance, and be used in a commercial nature instead of just sitting vacant.
Okay, so that's kind of a vision.
Yes, ma'am. And the applicants will talk a little bit more of why it can't really be used as residential. But they can speak to that.
Okay, okay, because it was previously in the county where you didn't have the need for a zoning to have your commercial business there. It could be.
Yes, ma'am, so this happened in 2001 when the ETJ was extended. And that's when it was rezoned to RA 20 under the city.
And I know Audio Arts has been there for decades, so long before there was any county zoning. Thank you very much.
No problem.
All right, any other questions? All right, seen none, thank you very much. Public hearing is now open, those speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Hello, council members and mayor. My name's James Dylan Forbes. I am currently one of the owners of the property. And I'd like to speak in favor of this proposal and recognize the planning board and staff for recommending the change to the plan. I can speak that historically, this property has been a old country store, grocery, and filling station. This was back, dating back in the 30s and 40s. And had, then after that, in about 1980, it became a recording studio when the tenant vacated the grocery store. It was converted to a recording studio. The tenant of that recording studio passed away last year. And so since then, it has been lying vacant. So our intent is to move this property to be zoned to where we can get some value and some use out of it. Most importantly, this is the first step to return some usable value to this building and this, this property. The state has declared that it cannot be residential due to some environmental restrictions. And so what we believe is that moving it to the multi-use designation is most compatible with what, where we see the surrounding area and the residential development in that, that area to where we can get some use and, you know, the city and residents can get some use out of this in value. That's, that's basically my points. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes.
Anyone else like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and council. You might tell by family resemblance, resemblance that I am the co-owner and brother of the first petitioner. I'm 50% co-owner, Robert Forbes. We grew up in the area, and it was farm, we grew up on a family tobacco farm. We sold the buildable part of that tobacco farm. We still own part of it that's not written in the conservation area. But we sold the upland part for residential, and this was intended to be part of that sale. But the environmental work done by the buyer found that there were low levels of petroleum residue in the soil and the groundwater. And their first interpretation, well, what, they, they insisted that it be removed from that sale in order for us to move. in order for us to move forward with the sale of what you all may have heard of as Ironwood East, which was the residential sale that we made. So we had to partition off this lot, it had not even been partitioned off before, and remove it from the sale, and then the state, once they concluded their investigation, they found that, they found that no further action, no further cleanup action would be required. But they put restrictions on the deed that no drinking water well could be there, which really, that didn't bother us because city water line runs right in front. But the restriction further stated that it cannot be used for residential, and that's really the only reason we're here today, we need to have some beneficial use from the property, and the only other practical designation is the mixed use for land use.
All right, thank you very much, any questions?
Just one, and not even related to this, related to what your brother's saying, Mr. Forbes. How long ago did you all say the gas station was there? Was it, did you say the 40s and 50s?
From best we can tell, the first gas station, the first general store was there maybe even around the turn of the century, around 1900, 1920, and then, of course, it became a gas station once vehicles started coming about.
That's right.
That was probably the 1920s, and it stayed a gas station general store for about 50 years, and it was 1980 when it transitioned to the recording studio. The fellow that rent, that leased it from us, actually from our father, this is just the extension of our father's lease to him, he was very impressed by the old wood and all in the building, and he had some of the local musicians come over and do jam sessions there after they, and then he got so excited about it that he made it to a successful recording studio. It had its ups and downs, but some of North Carolina's best-known blues artists have recorded there, Alge Mae Hinton, Big Boy Henry, of course, local artists, Lightning Wells in his early recordings were there, they did a lot of gospel music and beach music. But unfortunately, the manager, who still had plans to run it, was killed in a house fire along with his wife last year, and so it has become vacant since, and it has been in our interest to sell it.
So thank you for that information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. First person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion or motion.
I do have a question.
There's any questions?
I want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
So my question, and I'm not sure who this goes to, I'm looking at a letter that was sent to us stating concerns about this property being rezoned or changed, and that the state is going to be sold at some point and eventually settled, and three major residential developments planned for this area, one which is directly behind these parcels in question. Is there somebody that can explain this to me?
So any specific part of the opposition?
Did you see the email?
Yes, ma'am, it's included in the agenda packet, the one you're talking about.
So the second paragraph?
Okay.
When they're discussing the house fire and the parcel to the immediate left, Johnson Estate?
Mm-hmm.
Is that where the gentleman passed away?
Yes, ma'am, that's where the house fire happened. Concerning this email, if the property owners of that property ever wanted to rezone it, they would have to come before council and ask that question. It's not a part of this request or anything like that.
I understand that, but there are some concerns regarding future development.
In any future commercials, moving to this area, that would have, it's all currently zoned RA 20, so it would all have to be approved by city council.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Blackburn?
This mixed use is kind of a new zoning. I think we heard about it as vertical mixed use, is that right?
It's different. 2016, when this plan was adopted, mixed use was incorporated into this future land use. The vertical mixed use is a used, specific use for a zoning district.
Okay, so this is the land use plan.
Yes, ma'am.
So mixed use, mixed use can be commercial, office, resident?
It can be multifamily.
Okay, so mixed use really is truly no designation. Is there any reason why we would have a mixed use designation here in the land use plan versus a commercial O and I, something like that? You know, is it just to keep it flexible, what it can be in the future?
Yes, ma'am. You, yeah. The mixed use, I mean, it's to serve the, sorry, the residential properties around it, yes, ma'am.
That's what mixed use is?
Well, my apologies, mixed use, it'll offer a lot of different uses, like you said, multifamily, it could be office, but the use will probably be there to offer some type of service for the surrounding residential.
And sort of the bottom line is that it can't be residential, and so this is why this is not a residential request.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Comments, motions?
I have a comment. Just that I know there's a lot of anxiety in that part of the city about the tremendous amount of growth that we're expecting in the area, and it's another part of the city that we need to pay really close attention to, because we are going to have that commercial creep going in that direction. There's a tremendous amount of residential building that's going to happen over there, and it's a part of the city that has enjoyed a history of quiet. My kids go to the Oakwood School, which is not far from there, which is in the middle of a cornfield right now, so you get that feeling of safety when you're out there, and I know the residents who live there feel the same way, so, but that's part of living in a city that's growing. Things are going to change, but we need to do our best as a council to prepare for that change, to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make it safe for our citizens. I know we're putting a new fire station out there and some other safety amenities, and we need to keep pushing for the streets. It's another street that's managed by the state, so we're just going to have to do the best we can. But for now, for this parcel, it's a small parcel that's historically been used in a commercial way, it can't be used in a residential way, and I think it could be something that could, could serve the citizens that are going to be moving there.
I agree.
So, another exception to what we're trying to accomplish, you know, but in this case, I feel like it's.
And you're going to follow that with a?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Mayor Protem Daniels. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Now, on to other items of business. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. Item number eight, presentations by boards and commissions. We have our first one, letter A, Human Relations Council, I'll now call forward, Procopio Serrano for the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Procopio Serrano, I serve as the vice chair for the Greenville Human Relations Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present our annual report. The Greenville Human Relations Council is committed to advocating for all individuals in pursuit of strong human and economic relationships. We promote activities, educational initiatives, and programs that uphold human dignity, ensure equal opportunity, foster mutual respect and harmony among Greenville's diverse community. On Thursday, September 18th, the council's strategic plan was unanimously approved. Our goals are closely aligned with those of the city council, reflecting a shared commitment to equity and inclusion throughout Greenville. Some of the goals and objectives for our council, item number one, inclusive community initiative, that objective encourages participation, excuse me, in the community dialogues and events, some of the key actions, collaborating more with citywide dialogues, tackle social issues such as housing and food insecurity, explore more avenues for citizen participation in events and discussions, and of course, strengthening trust between city staff and the community. Our second sort of goal this year is a fair, a fair housing initiative, and that objective was to educate landlords and tenants on fair housing laws. Some of the key actions there is to partner with the housing industry and stakeholders, to hold community workshops on landlord and tenant laws, revisit the city's annual fair housing poster contest, of course, sharing education materials with the public, encouraging respectful landlord-tenant relationships, and of course, improving fair housing resources on the city's website. Both those goals are, is continuing work that we're doing with the council. Some of the key accomplishments this year, we did the 52nd Best Irons Award Ceremony that was held here at City Hall. We also did the Fair Housing Seminar that was conducted on April 17th at Pitt Community College with legal and state presenters. And then, of course, I saw some of you at the 18th Inclusive Community Breakfast held September 25th that focused on food insecurity that featured Reverend Richard Joyner. In conclusion, the Greenville Human Relations Council is dedicated to building a beloved community, a place where everyone can thrive and truly feel a sense of belonging. Our work goes beyond addressing challenges, it's about creating meaningful solutions that empower individuals, promote safety, and ensure that every person has an opportunity to flourish. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much for your service, we appreciate it. I thought you guys did an outstanding job with the breakfast, and Richard Joyner did a wonderful job, you know, explaining what his work is and how he's reached out, and it was really cool to see everybody in the audience kind of engaging and asking of ways that they can do the same thing here locally as well. And the story, you know, the thing that I got out of it that I thought was really cool is that he had a child that came up to him and said that they wanted bees, and he said not until you become a certified beekeeper, and he said a year later, every one of the kids were certified beekeepers, you know, and I was like, man, that is awesome, you know, like, I wish I had that control over my children. But I appreciate that, I thought you guys did an outstanding job, we appreciate all the work that you do at the Human Relations Council. Thank you, Ms. Daniels, for all that you continue to do, and every year, it seems like it gets better and better, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to ask, what further support do you feel like you need from the council in the work that you've laid out that you want to do?
Just like many other folks, we want engagement from as much of you as possible, you know, we want direct, when we can, communication with the council. We invite not just the liaison, but any of you to attend any of our meetings, so you can hear what we hear, you can hear the concerns that we have, you know, it's our job to kind of have our ear to the ground and see what concerns are coming up in the community. Obviously, we're a diverse community, we're unique to eastern North Carolina in the sense that we have very different groups of folks coming together in this community, and with such, they have unique concerns or needs, and as well as, like the food and security program that we had, and there'll be other items like that, that we'll, we'll need some resources from, from the city. So as far as what we need, you know, participation, come, come to our meetings, we have healthy discussions, and I encourage anybody who's hungry for a healthy discussion to come join us.
I just want to make mention, earlier in the year, I know that, this may have been even 2024, where there was a discussion about some things that, I think it was right before the election, and some things that you guys wanted to be able to express just about civility within our city and the pathway to being able to communicate that to the city. And so I want to be able to advocate for and be able to create a clear pathway so that you're able to be able to give suggestions, be able to give your thoughts to the council about different things that you're experiencing, because you guys are our outstretched arms into the community. And so being able to voice to us different actions that you feel like should be taken or stances that you feel like are important for the council to be aware of, that we then can go forward with having a clear pathway for that, because it was a little murky in terms of how, if you could make a statement, or if you could, you know, speak on behalf of HRC, and just making that more clear about the way that needs to look, and, but knowing that you have a council that is listening, not only the things that we hear, but you being able to communicate the things that you're hearing as well. And I love the visibility that we're seeing, I would love to see more of the visibility, I know that we're working on that, because I know that there are things that you guys are passionate about, things and initiatives that you guys want to do, and I don't see any reason why you can't do those things and have the support of the council behind you, so I appreciate as well the work that you guys are doing, and just, I know we're going through our changes with our boards and commissions, but we want to keep that in mind, that this is one that can really do some dynamic things, and allowing for, and giving you the support to be able to do those things, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question for the public, can you give me some examples of what visibility you have in community engagement?
So we, we, so we have active, like the inclusive community breakfast that we had, where we, we pick a topic that we hear about, and then it's our job, and we set up subcommittees to go out and, and talk to folks and figure out what are the concerns. In terms of being visible, you know, we do things like, we hold nominations for service awards, we want to make sure that different parts of our community are recognized in their different contributions, everything from some of the food bank folks to, many times, a lot of the participation and visibility comes from the youth. We get a lot of participation from, believe it or not, high school students who, who in, in our 52nd Annual Best Irons, we, 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 we send out sort of calls for, what are you guys doing, what's happening, and in that process, we get a little bit of back and forth and engagement to understand what's going on in the community. In addition, we also do our senior, you know, we have other events like our senior breakfast that we, we hold, and we're always looking for new ideas, honestly. So I don't know if that answered the question, how visible we are, I tend to be outspoken, maybe too visible sometimes, but we try to be respectful and maintain a easy, I would say, positive, and a way to move things forward in a positive manner, rather than try to come up here and figure out what's wrong with everything. We, we understand there are things that are concerning in the community, we understand that, and it's our job to listen to it, sift through it, and see what, what things we can do and put forward that are positive, that are going to do something positive. Obviously, if there's some concern that somebody raises that we need to raise our fist and say, hey, what's going on here, we'll do that as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you for your service to the board, and all the other board members, too. All right, next.
All right, second presentation.
All right, second presentation, Youth Council. I'll call forward Christian Blake and Jacob Austin. Do you have a presentation?
Good evening, Greenville City Council.
Good evening.
I am Christian Blake. I am a junior at JH Rose.
My name is Jacob Austin, and I am a senior at South Central.
We are here representing the Youth City Council. We have had troubles in last years when it comes to membership, but we are overcoming those this year with outreach projects to go out and get more youth involved with especially social issues that are local to Greenville. We are increasing our membership through this, and we need to work together to tackle many different social issues that affect us. Because when you really think about it, a lot of issues stem from the youth. Homelessness, mental illness. A lot of this comes from pivotal stages as we grow up in our childhood that can be tackled with just the right amount of, you know, helping and awareness during these incredibly important times. So, we hope that by our efforts of reaching a hand out and pushing forward to get kids involved with city government, with utilities that the government offers, paramedics, I know many people who wish to become some, firefighters, youth programs that encourage and push people into these fields, help fight against things like bullying and fighting. A lot of the schools have big problems with fighting and bullies. Fighting against those, making the community and especially the city safe for those who are most affected by it and who are most at risk. These are issues that we believe we can help tackle by putting a hand out for our city's youth.
And I guess to piggyback off of Christian, this year, we were specifically focusing on homelessness and mental health issues. We have shifted from last year where we were more of a, the Youth Council, and this year to more of a leadership development program. So after a conversation, we decided to focus on those things, the causes and effects of homelessness and how mental health is a cause of homelessness.
Yes.
Are there any questions from the council?
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Willis?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, thank you guys so much for coming and presenting tonight. I'm excited and really energized by the direction that the Youth Council is going in. So I'm proud of you guys, and you guys did great tonight. Thank you.
To add on to what my friend has said, with mental health and especially youth mental health, because when you really think about it, when you're young, you're a teenager, you have hormones rushing through your body. They are the most, if not the, well, the most susceptible group to mental health issues. Amongst teenagers, depression and anxiety is common. New studies have shown that fifty percent of American teenagers, not just in North Carolina or Greenville, but in the country, have a mental health struggle that they are dealing with. And it only takes, and sometimes, one moment for us to ruin or to damage our futures, maybe by using drugs as an escape, which is also something that can lead to homelessness. And that is something that is most commonly seen in the high school era of somebody's life. And I just think about how much better, how much more clean the seat, the streets of Greenville can be, especially moving forward if we help our most vulnerable in society, which is our children in the new generation. If we give them, again, a helping hand, then the city will be an amazing and better place to live. Are there any questions from the board?
I just have, I just have a comment. I just want to applaud you, both, both of you, for your presentation tonight, as well as the emphasis that you've placed on leadership in selecting issues that, where you feel that you could do work and do positive work for our community and for your fellow brothers and your brothers and sisters who may be in need. So just want to thank you and share my gratitude with you for what you're doing.
Thank you so much, Congressman.
Amen. I love what you said, help, giving enough help during those pivotal moments of life, especially in your childhood, it's a really big deal. And I just thank you for being so articulate and wonderful, both of you, for being here and sharing that with us. It's really inspiring. I hope you keep it up. Thank you very much.
It's no problem. Any more comments or statements?
I'll say that I'm depressed. I mean, I can tell you, when I was in high school, there's no way I would get in front of the City Council and speak. So the fact that both of you stood up here and eloquently went over and discussed some of the things that you guys are working on and the platform, I thought that was awesome. So.
Don't worry, it's very scary.
Hey, we're, we're nice, friendly people up here. We're not, we're not mean. And you guys did a great job.
Yes.
And I'm being, I'm being truthful and honest with you. You did a great job.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Are we done?
You might be able to talk to the Airport Authority. They might want you to do their presentation.
With that being said, Airport Authority, I'll ask Dan Mayo and Bill Hopper to come forward.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dan Mayo. I've been on the, on the Airport Authority for the past eight years. So I appreciate that privilege to serve along that, also with, with Mr. Robinson. The Pitt Greenville Airport, which you should know about, we want to give you kind of an overview tonight, kind of where we are, is that we currently have twenty-two full-time, three part-time members out there, four interns. The airport itself is a twenty-four-hour day operation, whether it's the governor's visit today, or the charter flight that ECU took yesterday, or, or during the evening that, there we go. Yep. Or during the evening that, whether it's pathology or human organ transplants that are coming in twenty-four hours a day, the airport is operating in compliance with the FAA. Law enforcement is provided by Pitt County Sheriff's Office. American Airlines is currently the connecting hub. We have three flights a day. Of course, prior to COVID, we have five a day. We're, we're down to three a day. Also, we have all the compliance with TSA, Transportation Security Administration. We house all the services, travel services, rental cars out there as well. Important to know that there are seventy aircraft based out at the airport. And so in those hangars, you have seventy aircraft in value. Some are twenty thousand dollars and some are up to twenty-two million dollar aircraft out there. Very nice. We've got twenty corporate hangars and twenty tea hangars. And in the last four years, we've added seven new hangars out to the, to the airport. So the scale of the operation, it's huge. We've got a great professional staff that's running that. But I want you to know also at this time, we're doing a really intensive self-study on how we can maintain efficiency and provide all these services to City of Greenville and to the county for all the services the airport provides that we have to have and we need. And so I want to introduce one other person here, Sue Stevens. Sue has joined us. She is an aviation consultant from Charleston. She's worked with Charleston Airport, Myrtle Beach Airport. So we're getting a lot of good information from her, and she's given us a good review of that. But we're under the guise and direction of Bill Hopper, so I'll turn off the rest of it. And he's got some slides, but some great information, and we'll be glad to answer questions with him. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Just very quickly, this, just kind of, I'm going to start with the economic impact of Pitt Greenville Airport. Pitt Greenville Airport, the state, NC State, in conjunction with the DOT, they do an economic impact study every two years. The latest one was done January twenty twenty-five. In the state of North Carolina, it was found to be eighty-eight billion dollar economic impact to the state of North Carolina. Aviation is big in this state. It is first in flight, as well as, you know, the, we have a large American base, as well as the military that also provide, that are also located here. Have four hundred and twenty-seven thousand jobs, thirty-four billion in personal income, and then four point eight billion dollars in tax revenue. In particular, Pitt Greenville, I mean, we're a part of this, there's ten commercial service airports in the state and sixty-two, what they call general aviation airports, for a total of seventy-two public use airports in the state. Pitt Greenville itself accounts for one thousand two hundred and seventy-five jobs, about ninety-one million dollars in personal income, close to sixteen million dollars in state local taxes, and two hundred and thirty-four million dollars in economic output. So you can see that Greenville, Pitt Greenville is a, a very important economic asset to the region. Tax revenue base, this is from the base tenants at Pitt Greenville, which includes many of the aircraft. We have a total of one point one million dollars in taxes paid to both Pitt County and City of Greenville in this past year, six hundred and forty-eight thousand going to Pitt County and four hundred and fifty-two thousand going to the city. This just goes over our capital improvement program. If you look in the right column, you're going to see local share none, mentioned many times. We, we do receive some, some, some very nice grants for capital improvements, for infrastructure, that, that we are able to use to maintain some of the infrastructure that we have in the way of, you know, as a timeout to be able to, you know, make repairs to them, as well as that we are able to construct new infrastructure as well, that, that we are able to utilize. You'll notice that we have about thirty-three, over the next five years, thirty-three million dollars in projects planned, where the federal share will be twenty-two and a half million dollars, and our state share will be ten and a half million dollars. Future growth, we, right now, and I know that I've talked about the hangars that we've constructed over the past four years, where we constructed seven hangars, we, we pretty much have maxed out all the space where we can do any construction, which, you know, we're right now working on some other areas. We have a ninety-acre parcel that's north of Belvoir Highway that can be used for industrial. And then we have two twenty-four acre parcels. And one of those, if you look on the right side, you'll see the twenty-four acres. That's what we're calling our North Twenty-four, and I'll talk a little bit more about that because that's where our next growth will be in, at the airport. This right here talks about the North Twenty-four development. If you look, we have two concepts. First of all, the North Twenty-four development is not just something where we say, hey, let's build it because we, we think there's something out there. We've actually been approached by, by, by different entities to, to, to put in hangars, to put in what they call a maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility. The maintenance, the, the maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility could account for a hundred and ninety-one jobs, is what they're estimating. Unfortunately, we weren't shovel-ready, so these have kind of come and gone. However, these things are happening, and so we feel like we need to have a shovel-ready piece of property, and, and these are just two concepts. One showing six hangars that could house corporate aircraft, and the, the one on the right concept, two, that has a ninety-one thousand square foot maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility, as well as, you'll notice on the upper right, that's a parts, aviation parts, and they, they've reached out, showed some interest, and, and were interested in having that associated with some hangars for, for corporate aircraft. And one other item, if you look in the very left, upper left, you'll notice these little airplanes, that's for electric aircraft. We've been approached by a company that is interested in, in North Carolina as being a place to charge aircraft because they need, they, they travel like about three hundred miles, and they need a place, you know, up and down the coast because they, one of the things that they want to do is go up and down the east coast. And this is a perfect spot for them to come in and charge aircraft. So, which is, you know, new technology and, as well as clean technology. We're also working on our terminal. I'm sure that many of you remember in nineteen ninety-nine where Hurricane Floyd flooded the, the airport, pretty much was under five feet of water in the terminal. And then in two thousand and eleven, we were fortunate enough to get some grants to where we were able to raise the boarding area above the floodplain. But we want to continue that. We have a five hundred thousand dollar grant that we're using to design what we call our general aviation terminal, in which case, the general aviation terminal, when, when people come here to, you know, possibly open up business or start business here in Greenville, you've got to, you know, this is the front door. This, you know, these people are not necessarily flying on commercial aircraft, they're flying on their business aircraft, and our general aviation terminal is the first place that they step and get their first impression in Greenville. And so we want to try to make that the best impression. Plus, we also want to mitigate floodwater because we, our GHA terminal right now, you know, back in nineteen ninety-nine was under five feet of water. And these thirteen million dollars that we're, that I have there, we haven't secured the funding for that. That's just, we have a price tag, and we are going to look for, you know, ways to fund that. This right here shows the passenger activity. If you look, twenty nineteen, we had a hundred and ten thousand passengers pass through Pitt Greenville. That was with five flights a day. And you notice, we got into COVID, and then we started kind of climbing back up. We're at three flights a day, and with three flights a day, we're, we're doing about eighty-four thousand passengers, which means that our planes are fuller than they were pre-COVID. We're right now, we, we're sitting like seventy, seventy-five percent, what they call load factors, and we're right now sitting about eighty percent. Americans very happy with, with what we have here, and so we want to continue talking with them about possibly expanding services, as well as, you know, trying to, to provide, find other airlines that could provide service. I want to get into the importance of business diversity. And we, I've kind of broken it down into three different categories. You'll notice that we have American, which is the, the airline. We have general aviation, which is the, the smaller piston aircraft, as well as what we call transient corporate aircraft. And then last being the, the base corporate. And you'll notice, we had, had in twenty nineteen, we had a, a pretty even split between each of these prior to the pandemic. And then the pandemic hit, and air service was, you know, we had some challenges with air service over the years. And you'll notice that when you get to twenty-three, we're looking at where general aviation and base corporate have gone up a little bit. However, they're taking over a, a larger share, whereas American, because of the, just three flights a day, is sitting at around eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars annual revenue. This right here shows our historic profit and loss. The, the pre-pandemic, we were sitting around two forty-one. And what the, the, the objective of the airport is, we are a, we're, we're considered a service to the, to the local community. That, that's, you know, airports in, in any community, and you try to, you know, we're not trying to make money. What we're trying to do is, you know, have our revenues cover our expenses. However, since COVID, you'll notice that, that we have had, you know, probably around a million dollars every year, starting in, in July twenty, until we get to present with, with the July twenty-four, twenty-five. This one right here shows our, where our revenue comes from this past year. The vast majority of it is one point nine million dollars from the sale of Jet A fuel. So the fuel itself is, is, that's a very big driving factor. It's, it's the best revenue source that we do have at the airport. This shows the airport revenue. I don't have the, the full figure below, but it is about four million dollars is the revenue that, that we have last fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And you'll see that we have general aviation a little bit over a million. Our base aviation is, is about one point seven, and then American a little bit over a million. These are the expenses, and this just shows a breakdown. And I, I think that if, if you look at a number of, of different, you know, companies and municipalities and everything, salaries are a big part of the overall expenses. It's about a third of our expenses, and, which is, is pretty much the, you know, what, which you'd see at other airports. And the, and it's not just salaries, it's the, it's the benefits, it's just all the things that come with it. However, these people are very important. It takes very skilled people twenty-four, seven to keep the airport open and operating, and you must keep it open and operating in a safe manner. So I just want to close just by saying, Pitt Greenville is a significant economic engine for eastern North Carolina, you know, to the tune of about two hundred and thirty-four million dollars a year. We have extensive infrastructure approvals, all done without local dollars. The past year, past five years, twenty-seven million, next five years, thirty-three million. So over a ten-year period, we'll have had sixty million dollars in infrastructure improvements, and none of it done with local dollars, all done with federal or state money. Our goals, short-term goals, we want to identify options to cover the gap between revenues and expenses. That's why we brought Sue on board. She's helping us, we've been working quite a bit with her. I just want to, she, she's. quite a bit with her. I just want to, she's has, she's very well-known in the industry. She got her chops through financing and then became an airport director down in Charleston. And we're very happy that she's agreed to come on board and to help us with our, with, you know, with the airport. Looking at the long-term goal of developing a business plan for sustainability PGV, she's helping with their strategic plan and taking a very deep dive into the finances. And I'll just close by saying the future's success depends upon strong community partnerships as we work together to maintain PGV as a vital asset to the region. And with that, I will close out. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Councilor Blackburn.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for that presentation. I always enjoy those, especially the economic impact, the study that the state does. That's always fascinating. Along those lines, when you say that the airport, there's twelve hundred and seventy-five jobs, that is associated or supported jobs.
Right. That takes all the factors. You've got your direct, direct impacts of economics, which is the jobs on the airport. You have your indirect, which pretty much is right around the airport. And of course, the induced, which is the multiplier effect where the dollar turns over each time.
Okay. And then my next question is, you know, I definitely see what happened in the pandemic, and that's where your losses began. That's just really, there were so many compounding losses during the pandemic. Can you, can you describe why you have that one million dollar loss and how you've been sort of overcoming it since the pandemic?
Yeah, well, it's really been the CARES Act money. That's been the, you know, that's been what's kind of helped us get through it. We had a nice CARES Act grant and we've used it, you know, basically what it was intended for. Unfortunately, the, and we're not, it's not just us, but other regional airports, they're finding it, you know, tough to get back up to where they were pre-pandemic. You know, my, I do have a sense that North Carolina is a very, you know, fast-growing state and eventually, you know, there's going to be some, you know, some breaks, I guess. And, but until then, no, it is, it's a challenge, right, to build up that service network.
And do you believe that that might, that loss or that negative balance sheet is related to maybe the fewer flights, just a general dip in airplane ridership since the pandemic?
Well, we've actually had very good ridership. It's just that we haven't been able to bring the flights back. And I do feel, first of all, I think, I feel like a number of things have gone up significantly in price. And to be able to, you know, keep the service and everything, you try to keep your costs as low as you can for the airlines that are providing it. But, you know, each flight, it's not just, you know, like the landing fees or the rents, the parking revenue. And that's one of our largest revenue producers, and parking has gone down considerably since the pre-pandemic.
Because if you look at your, you're absolutely right. If you look at your actual ridership, it's like, I think it was eighty, eighty-four, eighty-five thousand based to, based on, I mean, compared to about a hundred, over a hundred thousand before the pandemic. So it's not that far off now. It just, I guess the number of flights makes a difference.
Yeah, we were doing right anywhere between seventy and seventy-five percent load factors pre-pandemic, and now we're sitting about eighty percent. In fact, Dan and I went and met with some airlines and we met with American. And American is very happy, you know, with the, you know, the service. However, it's just not in their plan right now to grow a place like Pitt Greenville.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions?
I mean, I guess my only concern is, is that it looks like over the last five years and the next five years, you're gonna spend about sixty million dollars. But I think almost on average, you're losing almost a million dollars a year. So over that ten-year period, you're looking at about a ten million dollar loss. And I know you just hired someone to look at the finances. You know, when I was on the board very long ago, I know that we talked about some of the restrictions as far as what type of revenue you could produce out there, one of which was parking, other one was fuel. And I think, if I remember correctly,
Hangar rentals.
Yeah, well, hangar rentals is your main one. But the other, the commercial services does not produce a tremendous amount of revenue, which I think, is that correct?
No, it's actually, the commercial service itself doesn't really produce a lot of revenue. It's what's associated with it, for instance, rental cars
Sure.
and the, and the parking. But other than that, no, the, you know, landing fees and rent, rent money is not a big revenue producer for the airport.
Has there been any, like, outside thoughts? And maybe this will be a part of the process with bringing in the new employee. But as far as other sources of revenue, I know we've got land that's out there, leasing of land out there, you know, I just, just on the top of my head was having a partnership with ECU and using it as parking out there and having a bus go out there and take the students that have to park off-site out there. I don't know, maybe they're not the solution, maybe it's something else. But I'm just trying to think of different revenue sources for the airport to make it a viable asset. Because I mean, I have people on a weekly basis asking me about the airport and the sustainability of the airport and things that we can do to improve it. And I've explained, you know, the whole process of how it's very hard to attract the new commercial services to the airport. We've been close, I think right before the pandemic, I think we were very close with an airline. My concern is just, how do you stop the bleeding?
Right. And that is a big part of what we're
That's what we're doing now with our consultants, and then we have a fractional CFO doing the same thing, trying to analyze everything to make sure that we're providing those services and doing the best with the ones we have.
Yeah, and you know, you think about it, you know, I mean, the air service, it takes time, right?
Sure.
It's not something that you do overnight. I guess maybe one example is, for instance, what was it?
Trader Joe's.
Yeah, Trader Joe's. I mean, Trader Joe's, we had to meet certain criteria to get there. And we had to be something that they wanted to, you know, to come to. And it's the same thing with the airlines. You just, you just keep working at them. And unless you do that, they're definitely not going to show up. But you just keep working with them. And hopefully one day they will come in and, you know, you know, having a few flights a day would make a big difference, you know, in the revenue generation.
And I know, oh man, I don't know when it was, I think it was maybe nineteen, twenty times here. Didn't we get awarded, was it the SCASB grant, which was like a seven?
We have, we still have that.
How long is that good for?
It's good till twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
And we continue to work with it. And that's for service to, you know, Washington, you know, network service to Washington DC.
And that, and I guess for people that don't understand or know what that is, that is like a revenue guarantee, right, for airline that?
Exactly. The airport cannot give revenue guarantees, you know, because that's considered diversion of revenue.
Sure.
However, what we can do is, is we can use the SCASB grant. We also, at the time, if you remember, we got community support. And so there's, because DOT wants you have skin in the game.
Sure.
So you get community support. There's also some marketing dollars. There's, this is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money. And then the total value of that overall project is one point two million. And we continue to push that. We continue to talk with airlines and we've had some interest. But, you know, it's just something that we continue to work.
I'm looking forward to, I guess, hearing more about some of the things that we can do to adjust the expenses and the revenues to make it a little bit more profitable. I know, I know I've been hoping for years that it would change. And, you know, I understand COVID has changed things and the trajectory of where the airport was and where it's going. So hopefully, I'm hopeful that some additional highs will help out. That's all I got. Everybody else good? All right. Thank you guys very much for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Good talking. Pull my agenda. Go to the city manager's report.
Favorite line on the agenda, right? So we don't have, staff does not have any agenda items for the October twentieth, so we would ask council to make a motion. Council?
So moved?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilor Blackburn. I'm gonna go with Councilmember Willis for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
And I would like to cordially invite the council to a party as well as the community. We are having a celebration to celebrate the completion of the Build Grant. Long time coming. Ain't that right? So this will be at the State Theater on October twentieth, twenty-fourth, which is a Friday, starting at five thirty. And we will cut the ribbon on that bad boy and then celebrate. That's all I got.
All right. How about the city attorney's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, no comments?
Nothing?
Great meeting, great meeting.
I like it. Good comment, good comment. All right, councilman, let's go, let's do the city clerk's report.
Not a lot to say. Thank you for coming up to help us recognize Danielle. Thank you to my team. Oh, you guys are still here? Okay. Thank you to them and
You're paying them overtime right now.
And
They deserve it.
Yeah, they do everything. Actually, no, we comp time. But that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Let's start down here. Councilor Scully.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Danielle as well. Congratulations. And congratulate all the Thessmians again. Thank them for coming out tonight. And thank you to council and manager for helping to celebrate that really wonderful milestone for those young people. I'd like to remember Al Muller tonight. He was a library trustee in front of the library board, on the friends of the library board. And we, he passed away recently, so we're keeping his family, especially his wife Dot, in our prayers. She was a current serving member of the library board trustees. He was an English teacher at ECU, head of the ECU English and Education Department. After retirement, he was honored as a professor emeritus and was inducted to the ECU Educators Hall of Fame. He was a husband, father and grandfather. So we remember Al Muller tonight and thank him for his service to our community. Serving on all these different boards, you get really wonderful opportunity to meet all kinds of different people. And it's fascinating and wonderful. And the library people are so special and included. They're so great. They love books and education and sharing and children. And our community is so much better because of the work that they do. So thank you to Al, and we remember you today and pray for your family and their grieving. Congratulations to Michael Letz, congratulations to Michael Letzworth, the co-owner of Sam Jones Barbecue. He was honored this morning as the Small Business Leader of the Year for the Chamber of Commerce. So congrats to him. It was really wonderful to be there to celebrate small business. And it feels like Small Business Week to me. I was, had the honor of being a judge for the Miller School, Miller School of Entrepreneurship at ECU. It has an annual pitch competition. I get to be a judge this year, which is really neat because I started the scullery with a grant that we won through a pitch competition here through the City of Greenville. So that was really wonderful, meeting all those young entrepreneurs and then getting to celebrate a lot of other great small businesses this morning at that breakfast. It's really is an exciting time to be in Greenville and just want to lift up small businesses everywhere. Congratulate you all for the hard work that you do every day. I know how it feels. Keep it up. You're the backbone of our economy and our culture. And just congratulations to all those students at ECU. Good luck in your competition as you move on to the second round. And congratulations to Michael Letzworth and the other finalists this morning. It's been a busy week. We had a really great opportunity to check out the Ripe for Revival at an event last night. They are doing incredible work. They have these mobile grocery stores, which are going around the eastern part of our state and offering groceries to people in underserved communities and food deserts where there's no grocery store. You just have a Dollar General down the street, there's nowhere to get healthy options. And these buses are not messing around. They're full of wonderful locally sourced food, high-quality proteins that you could go buy at Starlight Cafe or Ford and Chep, the best of the best, really great stuff, and fruits and vegetables, all kinds of things. And it's a pay-as-you-can system. So people come on the bus. If they don't have any money, they're thanked and given their groceries and blessed and send them on their way. If people can pay a little bit, they do. And if people can pay more, they're encouraged to. If you go on the bus and buy groceries for your family and you have a little bit more that week, it's great to give a little more so that somebody else can enjoy food. And it's just a wonderful example of what can happen when people work together to provide for the community. It's just such an amazing, creative thing that's happening. And food insecurity and housing insecurity are huge needs and becoming more so. So just wanted to lift that up. If you're looking for somebody to support, look them up, Ripe for Revival. And really start to pay attention to your neighbors and find ways to help with food insecurity and housing insecurity. Volunteer, give out of your pocket and out of your heart and help, help out your neighbors. It's a desperate time for a lot of people. So we need to band together, take care of one another. So I thank them for all the work that they're doing at Ripe for Revival. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations again to all those who were honored tonight. Just a reminder that our twenty twenty-five municipal elections are coming up. Early voting starts October the sixteenth and goes to November the first. And then election day will be November the fourth. So I want to just encourage all of our citizens to make sure they are informed and that they get out and vote. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Blackburn, you still reading the paper over there?
I am. I'm sitting here reading my paper. No, thank you very much, Mayor. I would like to just take a minute, maybe a couple of minutes, for what is going to be a GUC appreciation comment. But before I do that, I would like to take this opportunity to correct misinformation that was again provided Monday night. And my peer on council, who provided that information, is not here. So I would just like, the people of Greenville deserve to have full information. And we need to always be aware of how decisions made by us and GUC affect people. So to state again that Greenville is currently under a triple electric rate hike. Three point three percent in twenty twenty-four, two point three percent in twenty twenty-five. These rate increases will fall off in two years, as well as a three point four base rate increase. That is a triple rate increase totaling nine point four percent. The comment was made Monday night that there had not been a rate increase in twelve years. Twenty twenty-four was not twelve years ago. So I just wanted to provide that correct information. It does not have anything to do with my admiration for the excellent work that GUC does, which is why I want to take this minute to talk about GUC and what they, and all the great things that they've accomplished, in addition to what they do every day of the week, handling massive amounts of waste, you know, sewer, providing clean water, as well as our electric and heating via natural gas. So twenty twenty-four, GUC reduced carbon emissions in the city by twenty-five thousand. So that is very admirable. That's twenty-five thousand, five hundred seventeen tons of reduced CO2 emission.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand, five hundred seventeen. It's, sorry, it's been a long day. My numbers, I might be saying them wrong, but it's a lot. They reduced a lot of tons.
Hold it up, your cover.
Yeah. If I can't read it right, you can read it right. This is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred seventeen tons of CO2. I would like to also congratulate GUC for opening up a community solar farm. This is awesome. This is just so awesome. They are really ahead of the curve on this. I think it's, is it the first one in the state?
Second.
Second?
Second one in the state.
I mean, they are just really knocking it out of the park. So thank you, GUC, for this.
First one in eastern North Carolina.
Definitely the first one in eastern North Carolina, like we like to do here in Greenville. And then the third thing I'd like to commend that GUC has done is they have planted sixty-three thousand nine hundred hardwood trees near their, at their facilities. And that's just an almost unimaginable number of trees. And how grateful we are for their stewardship in addition to, as I say, the work they do every day of the week. So when I discuss the rates, it's simply because I want to get the correct information out there. That has nothing to do with the good work that GUC does every day of the week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Foreman?
Yes. First, I'd like to reiterate congratulations to Danielle and thank you for all that you do. The other thing is that it has been an exceptionally, I would say, busy month with event after event after event, which I've attended as many as I could. But also due to boots-on-the-ground grassroots work, have had to prioritize some things. And want to share that we've moved five families, five families this month. Three out of transitional housing into their own places and two new ones into transitional housing. As well as today, I was very proud to have done orientation for eight young people in western South Greenville for new jobs, making livable wages with full benefits. And that's eight of fifteen. The other seven will be next week. And then the last thing I'd like to say is that my heart's been really heavy the last couple of days, even with all those accomplishments. There's been a lot of sadness with the loss Um, there's been a lot of sadness with the loss of a young person in our community through, um, due to a vehicle accident. And, um, not just in our community, but, um, in neighboring, um, counties, um, there's been losses. Um, so just ask everyone to keep those families in prayer.
All right. Thank you very much. Mayor President Daniels?
I want to, um, thank everyone for coming out to National Night Out. Uh, we had a really, really good time. Um, I actually liked that location, Chief. Um, I've never seen our officers out dancing like they were, um, and really engaging with the community. It was a really, really nice time. Um, this might have been one of the best thus far. Um, weather was good, everything, excuse me. Um, speaking of elections, we will be having a candidate forum right here at City Hall tomorrow night at six-thirty. And come out and hear from your candidates, um, that sit here on the council and those who want to be on the council, and get some answers for yourself. You hear directly from all of us. Um, it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The, um, Center for Family Violence will be having a luncheon on the sixteenth, and they will have a DV vigil, Domestic Violence Vigil, at six-thirty, um, at the courthouse on the twenty-first? Twenty-first, thank you. See, Danielle is on it all the time. Keeps us going. Um, as I stated earlier, it is, um, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Let's get the TATA's checked, ladies. Um, it's really important, and men suffer from it as well. So let's all do what we have to do to, to be safe and all that good stuff. And Sunday will be my twins Ashley and Alicia's birthday. So I want to embarrass them by saying happy birthday, um, in advance. Um, I get to dog sit this weekend, and, um, I hope they have a happy, I can't tell their age, but have a happy birthday, and I'm really, really glad they were born. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, October's also National Disability Awareness Month, I believe, too. Um, so ECVC had a really good banquet last week that I was able to attend to. They brought in Lou Ferrigno, who was the Hulk, gave a really, really good speech. Uh, kind of talked about some of his, and I think a lot of people didn't realize that he had a disability, but he has a hearing impairment, uh, from when he was, I don't think he was born with it, but I think it was right around the time he was born. Um, and he struggled through that his entire life, but it was a really good message. And ECVC does some great things in our community as far as placing people with disabilities in the workforce. So I'm fortunate enough to be on that board, so I get to see firsthand kind of what they do. Um, and so in honor of National Disability Awareness Month, um, thankful for all that they do and the people that they impact in our community on a daily basis. Um, also just want to reiterate to everybody, make sure you get out and vote. This is our last elect, I mean, this is our last meeting before the election. Um, so make sure you get out there and vote. It is incredibly important. Our, our voter turnout for municipal elections, not just in the city of Greenville, but just generally overall throughout the entire country is always low. Um, and it's very, very important that you get out there and vote because your local government touches you in more ways than any other form of government does. Uh, so make sure you get out there and support your candidates that you want to see in these seats up here because it's very important that we get as many participants as possible, exercise your right to vote. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Mayor President Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay?
Motion passes five zero.
We are adjourned.